Good evening, everyone. We, before we start our official board meeting this evening, we have a beautiful young lady, Ms. Callie Carrigee, who's an 11th grader at Destrahan High School, who will lead us in prayer before the pledge. And I don't want to do that. Ms. Carrigee's coming up to the podium now. As she walks up, let me tell you about this fantastic young lady. She is co-captain of the Desty Darlings and member of the nationally ranked competition team. She's vice president of the Interact Club, media officer for the FCS, editor for the newspaper club, The Prowl, beta-club member, National Honor Society member, National English Honors Society member, gifted AP student, superintendent's student advisory member, junior class president of the student council, film club member, Mu Alpha Theta member. And then outside of school, Callie is a competitive dancer for Kelly's Creative Dance Studio as well as an active member of the community and host birthday charity events each year since she was nine years old. Quite a young lady. Welcome, Ms. Carrigee. We're so happy to have you with us. And you may begin.
Thank you, Ms. Bernard. Please bow your heads. Dear Lord, thank you for providing us with the opportunity to safely meet tonight. We ask you to give us insight to lead with integrity and make decisions that will benefit all. We pray for open-mindedness and guidance in the matters at hand. As we navigate the challenges during this unprecedented time, allow us to maintain the spirit of optimism. We ask you to grant your blessing over the dedicated teachers, students, faculty, staff, and board members of St. Charles Parish Public Schools. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
And now Mr. Alexander will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to their republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. And thank you so much, Callie. It's a pleasure to have you with us. We are definitely blessed by your prayer and your presence this evening. Have a wonderful Christmas holiday. I think I am too close or something. I call to order the meeting of the St. Charles Parish Public School Board for Wednesday, December the 16th, 2020. Role call this evening. All board members are present with the exception of our president, Mr. Sunny Savoy, who we will appreciate your prayers for him this evening. So we have seven members present. We have Dr. Ken Ortling, our superintendent, joining us, and Ms. Shelley Babino, who is our board secretary. Welcome all. I would also like to welcome this evening Mr. Dick Gibbs, who is joining us. He is the parish council chairperson and in our audience this evening. Welcome, Mr. Gibbs. Thanks for joining us. Okay, we will now move on to our resolutions and proclamations. Item 2.01 is a resolution in memory of Ms. Leotha Alexander. And I would ask Mr. Alexander, if he would please read that one for us.
It'd be my honor. Resolution in memory of Ms. Leotha Alexander. Whereas Ms. Leotha Alexander served as a bus operator for 26 years in the St. Charles Parish Public School System, and be it resolved that the St. Charles Parish School Board herein expresses to the family of the late Ms. Leotha Alexander its sincere sympathy in this, their time of sorrow. And be it further resolved that a page in the December 16, 2020 minute book be set aside for the sole purpose of inscribing thereon this resolution and that a copy of this resolution be presented to Ms. Alexander's family. And I move that we adopt this resolution.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Mr. Alexander and a second by Mr. Nochan. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote.
I'm not getting anything yet.
I've got it.
Yeah, I've got it.
You wanted to... You have, don't...
Here you go.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Mr. John, has it come up on yours?
No.
Nope.
Does it do a role call?
I'm going to do a verbal role call. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Mr. Stephanie.
Did you see her?
I don't know.
Danny's here.
Oh, Danny's here.
Danny.
Next item is 2.02. Resolution granting appointment of Napoli and Sholnik P L L C for special council services. And I would ask Mr. Robichaud, if you would read that for us, please.
My pleasure. Resolution granting appointment of Napoli and Sholnik P L L C for special council services. Whereas vaping use among students of all ages and issues of health and monitoring related there to have become a huge problem for school districts both locally and nationally. And whereas various attempts are being made to control vaping among students and to recover past and future damages incurred by school districts. Whereas the St. Charles Parish School Board in the recent, in the recent past and in the future has been and will be affected by the vaping crisis. And whereas the St. Charles Parish School Board should attempt to recover its damages, past and future, associated with this scourge. And whereas the St. Charles Parish School Board wishes to attain special legal counsel. And whereas the St. Charles Parish School Board recommends the appointment of Napoli and Sholnik P L L C and the law offices of Gary Smith Jr. and associated attorneys and paralegals. Napoli and Sholnik and the law office of Gary Smith Jr. are experienced attorneys with board-based national experience in vaping and class action litigation with the resources to support this action and provide special council services and represent the St. Charles Parish School Board regarding vaping litigation. The St. Charles Parish School Board hereby resolves that a necessity exists for the employment of special counsel. And the St. Charles Parish School Board ratifies and approves the employment of Napoli and Sholnik P L L C and the law offices of Gary Smith Jr. and associate attorneys and paralegals as special counsel for the St. Charles Parish School Board in the above described matter and to take any and all actions necessary to pursue any right or claim of the St. Charles Parish School Board in the above described matters and to take any and all actions necessary to pursue any right or claim of the St. Charles Parish School Board related to the vaping crisis and litigation. It is further resolved that Superintendent Ken Ortling and the president of the St. Charles Parish School Board or their designees are duly authorized to sign and execute any and all documents necessary, including but not limited to contingency fee retainer agreement to retain the services of the aforementioned firms and council. And I move approval.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Mr. Robichaud and a second by Mr. Oquinn. Do we have any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 2.02 passes unanimously. We move on now to recognitions. Item 3.01, recognition of Christmas card winner. The annual Christmas card contest is held for students to compete for the honor of having their design selected as the board's official Christmas card. The 2020 winner is Casey Smith, a 10th grade student at Honville High School. Dr. Ortling and I will present the framed official school board card to Casey.
Next item on the agenda is 3.02, board and superintendent recognition.
We'll begin with our students. Honville High School student was named to the academic all-state volleyball team. We're going to wait for our recognition students to enter. And I'm going to repeat myself because I want to make sure that they hear their awards being called out. Honville High School student was named to the academic all-state volleyball team, Elizabeth Hardy. School system students were named to the volleyball all-district first team. From Destrahan High School, Addison Bennefield. Riley Boyne, who was also named the district most valuable player and named to the all-state volleyball team. Skylar DeFresco. And from Honville High School, Trista Nochan. School system students were named to the football all-district first team. First are Destrahan High School students, William Bryant. Calvin Bullock. Ethan Flannery. Dylan Gibbs, who was also named, who was also named the defensive most valuable player. Jace Gooden. Razan Keller, who was... Razan was also named the offensive most valuable player for the district. Kelvin Lee. Tyler Morton. Eli Taffey. And Dontrell Willwright. From Honville High School, Troy Kendrick. Trey LaBranch. Jerian Shelby. Sincere Simmons. And Colin Zerain. Honville High School students were named to the cross-country all-district first team, Bria Gaines. And Alexandra Johnson. Now Alexandra, stay right there for me. And Bria, if you could come back up. Moving on to our teams category, Honville High School boys and girls, cross-country teams, are district champions. Destrahan High School volleyball team is the district champion and their coach is the district volleyball coach of the year, Coach Edward Borgstedt. The Destrahan High School football team is the district champion and their coach was also named as the district football coach of the year, Coach Marcus Scott.
Yes, ma'am.
Call our meeting back to order. Moving on to our business items. Item 4.01, minutes of the November 16th, 2020 committee meeting, November 18th, 2020 regular board meeting, and November 30th, 2020 special insurance meeting.
Move approval.
Second.
Have a approval, a motion by Mr. Robichaud and a second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 4.01 passes unanimously. Item 4.02, proposed 2021-2022 school session calendar, first reading. School board policy mandates that the school board shall adopt a calendar for the forthcoming school session. A committee composed of school board members, a business and industry representative, central office administrators, principals, teachers, a parent, and students prepared a calendar for board approval in accordance with our policy and procedures. Adoption of the calendar for the forthcoming school year as early as possible allows for the information to be disseminated to all stakeholders in a timely fashion. This agenda item was reviewed at the curriculum, instruction, and assessment committee meeting of the board on Monday, December 14th, 2020, and is aligned with goal A of the board's strategic plan.
Move approval.
I'll second.
Have a motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Oquinn. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 4.02 passes unanimously. Item 4.03, revise 2020-21 Student Code of Conduct District Handbook. As mandated by Act 48 of the Second Extraordinary 2020 Louisiana Legislative Session, a special review of the St. Charles Parish Public Schools Student Code of Conduct District Handbook was conducted by the Discipline Committee on December 2nd, 2020. Recommendations for revisions to the handbook were made to include discipline procedures for the virtual learning environment. This agenda item was reviewed at the Curriculum, Instruction, and Assessment Committee meeting of the board on Monday, December 14th, 2020, and is aligned with goal D of the board's strategic plan.
Move approval.
Motion by Mr. Robichaud.
Second.
Sorry, missed it. Second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. Item 4.03 passes unanimously. Item 4.04, Families First Coronavirus Response Act, also known as FF-CRA. The Families First Coronavirus Response Act, FF-CRA, requires employers to provide their employees with paid sick leave or expanded family and medical leave for specified reasons related to COVID-19. The provisions of this act are effective through December 31st, 2020. Since the COVID-19 pandemic will continue beyond the deadline and the federal government has not provided an extension as of today, the board must determine practices relative to paid leave for employees who are required to isolate at least 10 days or quarantine 14 days. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the board on Monday, December 14th, 2020, and is aligned with goal D of the board's strategic action plan.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Oquinn, second by Mr. Suffren. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 4.04 passes unanimously. Item 4.05, Policy 1.29, Non-Title IX Sexually Related Student Misconduct, second reading and adoption. Upon review of Board Policy and Procedure 1.29, sexual harassment of students, significant revisions, including a title change, were required. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the board on Monday, November 16th, 2020, and the board meeting on Wednesday, November 18th, 2020, and is aligned with goal D of the board's strategic plan.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Nochan, second by Mr. Robichaud, oh, Oquinn, sorry. Second by Mr. Oquinn. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 4.05 passes unanimously. Item 4.06, Policy 1.31, Child Abuse and Neglect, second reading and adoption. Upon review of Board Policy 1.31, Child Abuse and Neglect, revisions were necessary to align with the 2020 Louisiana legislative mandate of Act 272. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the board on Monday, November 16th, 2020, and board meeting on Wednesday, November 18th, 2020, and is aligned with goal D of the board's strategic plan.
I move that we accept the revisions to Board Policy 1.31, Child Abuse and Neglect, for second reading and adoption.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Suffren, second by Mr. Nakant. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 4.06 passes unanimously. Item 4.07, Policy 4.30, Employment of Retired Personnel, second reading and adoption. Louisiana Revised Statute 11:710 and 1-710.1 were revised due to the adoption of Act 337. These statutes include payment options for retirees who return to active service on or after July 1, 2020. The Act also provides for additional required notification that the school board must give to the teachers' retirement system of Louisiana within 45 days after June 30th of each year. Since the St. Charles Parish School Board did not adopt a policy governing the employment of retired personnel, a new policy and procedure, 4.30, Employment of Retired Personnel, is being presented to the board. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the board on Monday, November 16th, 2020, and the board meeting on Wednesday, November 18th, 2020, and is aligned with goal B of the board's strategic plan.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Robichaud, second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 4.07 passes unanimously. Item 4.08, Policy 216, Board Meetings, First Reading. Upon review of Board Policy and Procedure 216, Board Meetings, significant revisions were required. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the board on Monday, December 14th, 2020, and is aligned with goal B of the board's strategic plan.
I move that we accept the revisions to Board Policy 2.16, Board Meetings, for our first reading.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Suffren, and a second by Mr. Nakant. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 4.08 passes unanimously. Item 4.09, 2-point, Policy 2.34, Superintendent, First Reading. Upon review of Board Policy and Procedure 2.34, Superintendent, significant revisions were required. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the board on Monday, December 14th, 2020, and is aligned with goal B of the board's strategic plan.
Move approval?
A second.
Have a motion by Mr. Nakant, and a second by Mr. Oakland. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. He just got it. Item 4.09 passes unanimously. Item 4.10, Personnel Items. Staffing management is necessary to maintain effective functioning of the St. Charles Parish Public School System. The Human Resources Department provides a staffing update monthly to the board. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee meeting of the board on Monday, December 14th, 2020, and is aligned with goal B of the board's strategic plan.
Move approval?
A second.
Motion by Mr. Nakant, second by Mr. Oakland. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 4.10 passes unanimously. Item 4.11, Reappointment of Stephanie Gullidge and Rosemary Sanders to the LaFawn Performing Arts Center Endowment Board until June 30th, 2021, retroactive to July 1st, 2020. The board approved the appointment of the initial board members for the LaFawn Performing Arts Center Endowment Fund on April 24th, 2019. The terms of two of the board members, Stephanie Gullidge and Rosemary Sanders, have expired. On November 19th, 2020, the endowment board met and voted to reappoint both Stephanie Gullidge and Rosemary Sanders for an additional one-year term ending June 30th, 2021. As the overseeing custodian of the endowment fund, the St. Charles School Board must approve the reappointment. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the board on Monday, December 14th, 2020, and is aligned with goal C of the board's Strategic Action Plan.
I move that we approve the reappointment of Stephanie Gullidge and Rosemary Sanders to the LaFawn Performing Arts Center Endowment Board.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Suffren, and a second by Mr. Alexander. Any discussion?
How many board members are on this endowment board?
Six.
Six, okay, thank you.
Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 4.11 passes unanimously. Item 4.12, Accounts Payable for the Month of November 2020. Invoices and other financial obligations of the board of the school district are customarily paid weekly. Request for approval of these transactions is normally made to the board monthly. The board must approve expenditures of public funds under its jurisdiction. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee meeting of the board on Monday, December 14th, 2020, and is aligned with goal C of the board's Strategic Action Plan.
I move that we approve the accounts payable for the month of November 2020 in the total amount of $2,865,545.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Suffren, and a second by Mr. Alexander. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 4.12 passes unanimously. Item 4.13, Comprehensive Annual Financial Audit, Fiscal Year 2019-20. Laport CPAs and advisors completed the financial audit on December 3rd, 2020, for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2020. The auditors presented the results of the audit to the board on Monday, December 14th, 2020. The audit report is presented for acceptance by the board. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee Meeting of the board on Monday, December 14th, 2020, and is aligned with goal C of the board's strategic plan.
I move that we accept the comprehensive annual financial audit for FY 19-20.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Suffren, second by Mr. Robichaud. Any discussion? Hearing none, please cast your vote. Item 4.31 passes unanimously. Item 4.14, Election of President of the Board. Board Policy 2.12, Officers of the Board calls for the election of a president and vice president to perform various tasks as defined in official policies of the board. Board Policy 2.12 calls for the election to take place in December, so one of its members will serve as president of the board, and another will serve as vice president for the subsequent year. Conducting an election for the presidency of the board in December is in accordance with Board Policy 2.12.
Madam Vice President, I would like to nominate Melinda Benard as president for 2021.
Second.
Twenty-one.
I think you do. Madam Vice President, I'd like to move the nomination to be closed.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Robichaud, and a second by Mr. Smith to nominate Melinda Benard for board president, and then I have a motion by Mr. Nakant, and a second by Mr. Suffren, two close nominations.
You have to treat them separately.
I have to treat them separately, okay? Have a motion, and a second to nominate Melinda Benard for board president.
You.
By Mr. Robichaud, and a second by Mr. Smith.
Yeah. Madam Chair.
Yes.
You would have to vote on the nomination to close, the motion to close first, and then that would make the other point moot.
Correct.
By acclamation.
Thank you. Okay. I had a second motion by Mr. Nakant, and, by Mr. Nakant, a second by Mr. Suffren, two close nominations. Do we have any discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nominations are closed.
Congratulations, Ms. Benard.
So very kind. If I could have a moment of personal privilege, I do thank you gentlemen for your support. It will be an honor and a privilege to serve with this board as president for 2021. I look forward to working with you all, and Dr. Ortling, as he guides our resilient, creative, and dedicated employees and staff in providing optimal learning opportunities for our students. I for one am ready to kiss 2020 goodbye, and welcome 2020 goodbye, and welcome 2021. We know that many challenges will remain when we return from the Christmas holidays, and probably for several months into the new year. But I pray that when the new school year begins in August of 2021, we will have all of our students back in our buildings where we can best facilitate their learning and meet their social and emotional needs. Welcome 2021. Item 4.15, Election of Vice President of the Board. Board Policy 2.12, Officers of the Board calls for the election of a president and vice president to perform various tasks as defined in official policies of the board. Board Policy 2.12 calls for the election to take place in December, so one of its members will serve as president of the board, and another will serve as vice president for the subsequent year. Conducting an election for the vice presidency of the board in December is in accordance with Board Policy 2.12.
Madam Vice President, it would be my honor and privilege to nominate Mr. Al Suffren to serve as our vice president for the calendar year 2021.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Nakant, and a second by Mr. Robichaud.
Madam President, I make a motion to close nominations.
I'll second.
I have a second motion to close nominations, first by a motion by Mr. Robichaud, and second by Mr. Nakant. Do we have any discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nominations are closed.
Congratulations to Mr. Suffren.
If I may have a minute also, Ms. Benard.
Sure.
Thank you so much, Mr. Nakant, for the nomination, and thank you, board members, for your support and confidence. We are fortunate to have an outstanding board, superintendent, executive staff, and administration. I'll look forward to working with each of you. Again, thank you.
And we move on to our closing items. Item 5.01, Standing Committee Reports.
Madam Chair, the Transportation Committee did not meet.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander.
The Finance and Audit Committee had a meeting on Monday, December 14th, and covered two items. Both of those items were on the agenda for this meeting, and were approved by the full board. Those two items were the comprehensive annual financial audit for FY 1920, and the accounts payable for the month of November 2020. Also, the Budget Review Committee had a meeting on Monday, December 7th, and covered several items, including before and after care financial status, financial cost and savings relative to operations under COVID, sales tax collections, and FY 20 financial audit results. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Madam Chair, Capital Improvement Committee did not meet. Mr. Rome and his department are just sailing along real well, and we decided to give him the meeting off. That concludes my report.
Thank you.
Madam Vice President, the Personnel Committee met last Monday and reviewed the items that appeared on the agenda tonight. I'd like to thank the board for your attention to those items and for your approval.
Thank you, sir.
Madam President, the Risk Management Insurance Committee did meet on Monday also. We met to select our property insurance agent to go out and find us the best rates and coverage for our property insurance. The Insurance Committee selected a combination, a team of Riverlands Insurance Services and Rick Grub and Associates to be our property insurance agent for the next three years. That concludes my report.
Thank you.
Just one correction, Jay.
I know, I forgot his initials, that's why I started.
Well, Ms. Benard, no, Ms. Benard is not president.
Not yet. I know, I'm messing with her.
He's being...
I'm messing with her.
She will be at the first meeting in January.
President-elect.
President-elect.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Oakland. Appreciate it. The Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee also met on Monday, December 14th. We had two items on our agenda that were passed earlier this evening. Those were the proposed 2021-2022 school session calendar for first reading, and revised 2020-21 Student Code of Conduct District Handbook. We also had a wonderful presentation by Assistant Superintendent Ms. Erin Gragné, giving us an overview of how our students are performing this year, as compared to how they performed last year, and also looking at how our students in e-learning are performing. And she will continue that, that information at our meeting in January. We thank you so much. That was a lot of effort, and I appreciate it. I know we all do. Okay, thank you. That concludes our Standing Committee Reports. Moving on to 5.02, the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. First, I'd like to congratulate Ms. Melinda Benard, our incoming president, and also Mr. Al Suffren, our incoming vice president. It will certainly be an honor serving alongside both of you and this entire board as we move into the 2021 school year, and 2021 year in general. So we certainly thank you for your continued support. I look forward to continue serving underneath your leadership. I'd also like to provide a little bit of special recognition for Ms. Shonda Harris, who is in our crowd currently. She was, she is obviously the, besides being the principal of the year at St. Charles Parish Public Schools, the principal at St. Rose Elementary, she also facilitated the Calendar Committee meeting this year. So she and Regina McMillan also did a phenomenal job of facilitating that process and really proposing a great calendar for the 2021-2022 school year. So I'd like to congratulate and thank them both for being here. And while we're throwing out some congratulations, congratulations to Destrahan High School's Wildcat, Fighting Wildcat Football Team, coaches, players, on making it to the semifinals in the state 5A football playoffs. Their hard work, determination, and success certainly makes our AAA school system and community proud, and is a true testament to their commitment to excellence. We would also like to thank all of the programs that directly support their continued success, including band, color guard, dance, and cheer teams, in addition to the trainers and medical professionals. We look forward to seeing them beat Akiana this Friday as they advance to the state championship game. Good luck Wildcats. Please tune in to Channel 8 over the Christmas break to view Christmas programs hosted by our schools throughout December. These holiday programs feature the outstanding talents of the students in St. Charles Parish. The Channel 8 programming schedule can be found on the district's website. It may look a little bit different this year, but there were certainly opportunities for our students throughout our schools. On behalf of the St. Charles Parish Public School System, I want to wish all families, employees, and members of our community a wonderful holiday season. There will be early dismissal on Friday, December 18th. Holidays will extend from December 21st. Holidays will extend from December 21st through January 3rd. Classes will resume on Monday, January 4th, 2021. While challenging, it has been an extraordinarily opportunistic year where we have come together to reimagine services and provide high-quality educational opportunities for our students. I'd like to give a special thank, thank you to all of our teachers, administrators, counselors, nurses, custodians, food nutrition personnel, bus operators, distribution men, who I forgot at the last thank you, maintenance personnel, and all of our St. Charles Parish Public School employees for your commitment, and Board for your commitment to this organization, our school system, and our community. We appreciate each and every one of you. May all of you have a joyful, safe, and blessed holiday season and a healthy, happy New Year. Thank you, Madam Vice President. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Ortling. We now move on to Item 5.03, Superintendent Evaluation Update, Executive Session, Board Meeting Only. Per Revised State Statute 42:16-17, the Board will go into executive session to discuss the superintendent's evaluation.
Madam Vice President, moving, we go into executive session at this time?
I have a motion by Mr. Nakant.
Second.
Second by Mr. Robichaud, thank you.
Make a motion, go back into regular session?
I'll second.
Have a motion by Mr. Robichaud and a second by Mr. Nakant to go back into regular session?
Move Adjourn?
I'll second.
Have a motion by Mr. Robichaud and a second by Mr. Nakant to adjourn the meeting. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? We are adjourned.